Ask her again if she's hurt.
Yep.
Tina. When I'm making minimum wage, it may be based on the memory. So. Okay. They're different. They're stationed at the same time. A different area. What's this one? Support stand. Yeah, so this is instruction. On the team. I don't know. Like, she's gonna put on the, I'm sorry. She's gonna put on the floor. Oh, okay. Get one response. Carrie. Who's the individual that killed? Over on my right. Talking to John Rice. That's right, that's right, the new one, the new. You read my mind. Thought Erin not to be here, but. Got the email earlier today, she's not gonna be here here this year. I guess they came up with their soccer finals or something last night, she had to do a game today. And I only, I didn't get that from John, I got that from her. Yeah. It's already too late, that's out. Cause I, I was off here. She, she should be. He? We don't do like. Oh, I know. I miss, I miss those games. Oh, yes, we did. Yes. We can bring it forward. It's the, have to do the, the units. Jerry's got done. Jesus, carry on. No, for the trip out there. Certainly, he did that. What she said to me, it was not. We're sort of damn. Yeah, so we do like three sixes. And get by five bases. Doesn't matter. I mean, it's, it's, it's. It's just like, you know, that's why things are 99 cents. Same thing, right? My phone's got seven on two, I apologize. Okay, thank you, we're gonna call the meeting to order and we're gonna, please, please stand for the pledge.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That was an impressive pledge, thank you. It was. If, uh, we could just pause for a moment of silence. Johnny Witz, a graduate of, and former board member of the North Syracuse Central School District. And Paul V. Brondi, a graduate of the North Syracuse Central School District. Thank you. We're gonna start with a presentation which is a proclamation for Administrator Appreciation Day. So I'll read the proclamation, then we're going to present to several administrators present. School administrators, the leaders of public schools, have had a positive impact on students, staff, parents, and members of the community at large. School administrators energize students and staff, respond to student needs, empower others, and recognize and celebrate achievement. School administrators, whether they work directly in a school building or at the district level, share the common goal of providing the foundation, environment, and professional learning community in which all students can learn and learn well. School administrators are entrusted with the well-being of our community's most precious members, the children. The administrators of the North Syracuse Central School District are professionals of the highest caliber. Students, parents, staff, and community members recognize, applaud, and appreciate their efforts to provide children with a five-star quality education program. To honor the administrative staff of the North Syracuse Central School District and their accomplishments and efforts on behalf of our community's most valuable resource, the children, I, Paul Farfalea, the president of the North Syracuse Central School District Board of Education, on behalf of the Board of Education, express our deepest gratitude to our administrators and proclaim November 7th, 2019 as School Administrator Appreciation Day to be celebrated with appropriate educational activities. Send the proclamation. Oh. I'll make a motion, can I get a second for that? Second, Mr. Crabtree. Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? That's Carrie, thank you. Thank you. When we call your name, if you could please come forward and accept this certificate for Administrative Appreciation Week. Sean Ackley. Greg Stone. John Rice. Matt Matala. Kathy Wheeler. Lindsay Maloney. Janet Brevka. Donna Marie Norton. Tina Shimaluski. Lisa Garofalo. Dawn Hussein. Ashley Carducci. Dave London. Is there any other administrator here that I have not called? Want to say thank you for all that you do, and I will be making some additional comments at the superintendent's comment time, but it's because of the administrators that support our buildings along with the teachers and the rest of the staff that help our children be successful, and I want to again say thank you. Our next presentation, we have a presentation on the Mentoring Positivity Project.
Good afternoon, I'd like to thank the board and Dan for having us here tonight. My name is Cindy Chesla.
I'm Monica Fitzgerald.
Erica Gilbert.
And we're here to talk about the mentoring program that we started at Gillette Road Middle School. Our journey started about three years ago. We were looking for an educational conference, and we found the Model Schools Conference, and we thought with 5,000 educators and hundreds of workshops that this was the one for us. So we wrote a grant, and we won the grant, and we got to go to model schools for the first time two summers ago. Between the three of us, we divided and conquered, and we went to a lot of workshops, and we knew that we wanted to bring something back to impact our schools. And we decided that a mentoring program between teachers slash adults and students was what we wanted to do. HMH, who puts on Model Schools Conference, was so impressed by our story that they invited us to come back this past summer and present on our vision to impact. So that's a little bit about our journey, and our why is our vulnerable student population. They just need a reason to come to school. Think about this. More than two-thirds of students reported one traumatic event by the age of 16. This is hard for adults, imagine being five, six, or seven years old. What can we do to support our students in our schools and in the classroom? We can accomplish this by building positive relationships. No significant learning occurs without a significant relationship.
So our mentor program is currently in year two. Our program is meant to be natural yet intentional. We use the ABCs of disengagement, attendance, behavior concerns, and course performance to make decisions on which students we are going to be working with. Teachers meet with a mentee a minimum of one time per week for 10 to 15 minutes. Data from last year showed an increase in attendance, an increase in classes passed, and a decrease in behavior concerns. Our purpose is to build a relationship with students, and as our quote states, "We believe once students begin trusting the adults around them, the academics will fall in place." We need to build relationships first. In June, we asked our students, "What advice would you give your teachers to help you be your best you?" This is what they said.
Actually, listen to us, sometimes we explain a story to a teacher while they're doing something, and they say they're listening, but when you're done, they say, "Explain it again."
Make a goal for the school year to see if you can achieve it, and to see where you're at.
Tell students that they will become someone in life because they, they will then believe in themselves.
My advice for my teachers is to be able to have one-on-one time with me and have patience with me.
Take the time to have a talk to show us you care.
Teachers should be more happier and act like they like their jobs, because when they're acting like old timers, they're annoying and no one wants to be there.
To be more understanding because some kids are not treated right at home.
I'm nice when you're nice.
I think teachers should get to know the students more, because teachers only know the students by their name and how well they do in school.
Don't be rude to your students, you don't know what's going on in their lives.
As you heard from our students, they are looking for people at school who will listen to them, will help them set goals, will believe in them, and who they can trust, respect, and connect with. It all starts by building relationships.
Building relationships is key, and by linking mentors to mentees, we believe we can make a difference to our students over time. Although the long-term goal is to increase graduation rates, we believe the mentor program will make an impact that may be more immediate in many other areas, such as healthier relationships, better attitude about school, enhanced self-esteem and self-confidence, improved behavior, strong relationships, and improved interpersonal skills. So here's our impact for 2020. We shared our mentor program with the junior high over the summer. We met with Kristen Hill, the associate admin, and she really liked the idea and was excited to start a mentor program. We provided her with a list of our students that were mentored, since most of our seventh graders were moving up to the junior high. She reached out to the Rocks Middle for more names of students that would benefit, and even looked to her ninth graders. Currently, the junior high has 50 teachers signed on to mentor students. Our goal is to share the mentor program and how to get started in other schools across the district. We're planning to have a workshop in November to share how to recruit members, ideas to work with students, and share some articles that Elaine Ormsby shared with us when we first got started. We created a Google Drive for mentors to collaborate and share ideas across the district. Over the summer, Erica, Cindy, and I wrote a mentor program handbook that provides the steps to get started, and you all have that in your folder. Finally, we will collect data using a Google form for mentors at the end of the year and use school tool to document the ABCs of disengagement, as Erica said, attendance, behavior, and course performance. Finally, I would like to share how the positivity project is going at Gillette. This is another initiative to work with all students on character. I pitched this to the BPT last year with Chris Leahy's support, thank you, Chris, and we sent teachers to the training. The positivity project is based on the premise of hashtag "other people matter." We're in year one and just starting off. One day a week during win time is used to teach students the 24-character strengths and the true meaning of hashtag "other people matter." We started with our why, and we will end with that. It's about the students we teach that come to school and need an extra layer of support. We can all make a difference. Thank you, Dan, and members of the board for allowing us to share our program.
Do you have any questions?
I don't have questions, but thank you so much for this presentation. Thanks for not editing out anything, you know, that the kids were saying. I think that really struck home, that's important to hear their feelings too, and I'm glad that we're focusing on it. You got right to the point.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Yes. We apologize, we left off three individuals that are my right-hand men, and I'd like to bring up Chris Leahy for Administrator Appreciation Week. Jason Nephew. And Don Keegan. Thank you. Our next presentation is on the North Syracuse Early Education Program Budget Update.
Yep, great. Good evening, everyone. All right, well, thank you for having the Early Education Program here tonight to present our budget. I'm a one-man show, I guess, tonight, but I certainly would like to give credit, first and foremost, to Cindy Siriyo, our account clerk that works in our business office that really puts the entire budget together and spends the year tirelessly working on our budget and updating our facts and figures. So I thank you to all the audience members for being here for my budget presentation, that's great. Biggest turnout I've had yet for, and certainly those that are here from the Early Education Program, and to the board members and cabinet members. So first, I thought I would just give you a quick recap of our program makeup. Usually, we get more into this for our BPT presentation, which will be in December, but I just thought I'd want to highlight, particularly for those who may not be very familiar with our program, just what we kind of look like on the inside. So we're a special education program under Section 4410 of New York State Education Law, also referred to as Special Class Integrated Setting, or SCIS. So all of our classrooms are integrated, we have 12 classrooms, five of them are full day, seven of them are half-day, so we have an AM and PM session in the afternoon. About 288 students that come right now, and that number typically increases to over 300 as the year progresses. We do serve all of Anadaga County this year in particular, we have about, we, not about, we have 10 school districts that are represented, but 75% of our students this year are North Syracuse School District residents. This is kind of just a quick picture of what our staff looks like. We have 74.9 staff members total, so 75-ish. This slide gives you just a quick breakdown of what our revenue looks like. Our special education funding for approved expenses comes from the state and the county, 60% from the state, 40% from the county. This year, we did receive a 2% increase in our annual tuition rates for our special education students. For our parent-paid tuition, this is for our general education students. We do a market analysis for tuition every year and look at what some of our local competitors are charging, and we try to price ourselves right in the middle of that, so we're not the highest, not the lowest. And so every year, it does tend to go up slightly. And then in addition to tuition, there also are noted some additional revenue sources here, flow-through money that comes from our outside districts, and CPSC grant money and evaluation revenue. This slide just gives you a quick picture of what our revenues look like specific from student tuition, so our general ed students and our special education students, so just under 5.7 million. This is a, just a summary of what our expenditures look like. This year, we're anticipating an overall increase of about 4%, and some of the areas fluctuate just based on staff changes. So our proposed budget for the school year is just under 6.4 million. This is just a different way to look at the expenditures in a pie chart. Similar to past years, 88% of our costs are specifically costs that are related directly to working with students. So this is kind of just a quick picture of our overall financial condition. We have been receiving from the state and county a 2% increase over the past five years, which continues to be a good thing. This year, our program did qualify to participate in the CEP program, which is the Community Eligibility Provision, where our students receive breakfast and lunch. So our half-day students participate, the half-day students that come in the morning get free breakfast, the half-day students that come in the PM get free lunch, and the full-day students get breakfast and lunch. So while there has been no change to our special class reimbursement methodology, the rate-setting unit and Department of Budget has approved for us to use our actual revenues for offsetting revenues instead of daycare rates, which has been really an ongoing issue. So starting with last school year, they've made some, some changes in the right direction. We also continue, continued last year to receive some supplemental funding from Assemblyman Al Sterpi, which has been very welcomed and definitely appreciated by our program. And we do have an adequate fund balance to support the deficit in years where that is the situation, and there also is a waiver process for us to work in order to attempt to increase tuition rates. So some next steps for us. A year ago, we did receive some tuition assistance grant money that we can offer to our general education students for families that are in need, so we continue to manage that money that was funneled to us through the Optimist Club and the Friends Organization. We do continue to study options for before and after-school care, looking for ways to make that work in our environment. We always continue to explore ways to increase our revenue, so ways to increase our student enrollment, specifically our general education students, and continue to evaluate the tuition costs that we can charge. Something that has been an ongoing challenge is the lack of increase in funding for evaluations. That has not gone up at all over the past 10-plus years, I would say. So that's, continues to be a challenge for us. And something that's kind of new and exciting that we are looking into are some grant opportunities for making our playground more inclusive, and so that's something that we hope. for making our playground more inclusive, and so that's something that we hope will come to fruition in the near future. So that is all I have to share with you unless you have any questions for me.
Hi, Don.
Hi.
So what is your fund balance? As you said, your revenues and your expenditures aren't adding up, and the rest is going to be made up with a fund balance.
Right, so the Board of Ed should have received a separate document that was our fund balance information. Yeah, we can get it to you if you did not receive it.
And then you said that you're open to all of Anadaga County and 10 districts are represented within -- do they do anything to help promote, to attract new students? I mean, we have some openings, correct?
We do have some general education student openings, yes. No special ed openings. So are you asking me if the outside districts are promoting it?
Yeah, do we help? Do they help with that?
It's a good question. I would say a lot of our relationships come from word of mouth, and so just we continue to put our name out into the communities, and we do participate in preschool fairs and things like that in other surrounding areas. So we go to Liverpool, we go to the city, and there are different ways that we continue to do that. I'm not sure that they're not necessarily handing out our information for us, but certainly by making good connections with them, they are sending people our way.
Good.
Yeah. Thanks, Mary.
Yes, Mr. Crabtree.
Don, thank you for coming tonight. 288 total students. Is that an increase over the years? Is it stable, or are we decreasing? Where are we the last few years with -- because with tuition, that will help.
Correct. So last year, I believe, we ended with around 305 or 306 kids, but we have ongoing enrollment that happens weekly, I would say. So as the weeks pass by, we have families that are joining our program. So even though we're starting at 288, we will continue to see that grow. This year, I think, was probably the first year in the last handful of years that we were full for our special education students at the beginning of the school year. Usually, that takes a little bit of time, you know, through the month of September, but we started first day of school with our program being full, so.
And I just want to make a comment. I have visited this school. It is amazing school. The staff is just unbelievable, what they do with these young people. And I would say, any board member, you should travel to this school and see the amazing job these people do. And, Don, your leadership is awesome.
Thank you, Mr. Crabtree.
You're welcome.
Certainly, you're all welcome to come and visit. I'd love to tour you.
Okay, Mr. Crabtree is the North Syracuse rep on the OCM-BOSSES board. I'm going to defer to Mr. Crabtree for the introduction of our next presentation.
Thank you, Mr. President. Tonight, we have two wonderful people that represent our OCM-BOSSES. We have Deputy Superintendent Colleen Vigiani. I've known her for five years since I've been appointed by this board to represent us. Amazing lady who works hard very much every single day. And with us is the --
I'm going to stand if that's okay. Is that okay? Okay. Thank you very much, Dan, and Mr. President, and Bob Crabtree, and the whole board for having us here as a BOSSES to talk to you a little bit about an opportunity that's presented itself to us that we feel like we can't pass up. So at our Anadaga-Cortland-Madison BOSSES, overall, we serve about 2,200 students, kindergarten through grade 12, across our region. And of that, we have about 250 students who attend our Crown Road campus right here in Liverpool. And you can see the building, the location, right here. And a unique opportunity has presented itself. So a unique opportunity has presented itself, and really, what we are in the business of trying to do is provide a continuum of services to meet your students' needs when, in fact, you're not, for whatever reason, able to have them here in North Syracuse. And we want to do that in a cost-effective manner, so that's really our goal. So the reason we're here right now is we've been leasing our Crown Road campus that's at 4,500 Crown Road for about 32 years. And the owner, which is named ATRAP, that's the corporation, they received a purchase offer on the building for $12,850,000. And basically, because we were in a lease agreement with them, we had the opportunity for the right of first refusal. So we quickly did a lot of analysis to determine what would be in the best interest of our 23 school districts as far as how we wanted to proceed. We had a meeting with the superintendents. We had a meeting with the business officials, and today, we're just going to go over those options for you so you can understand what we were faced with and kind of ultimately our final recommendation. So we're going to let you know briefly about what facilities we actually own at OCM-BOSSES. We're going to spend a little bit of time talking to you about the Crown Road campus itself, the options we explored, and obviously, very importantly, the financial analysis that went along with that and what our next steps will be. So what do we own at OCM-BOSSES? Some of you may or may not. I know some of you have absolutely been to the Cortlandville campus. I know Bob has been there. I know Dan has been there. I know Mike has been there. And so we had this building built for us in 1969, and it has career and technical education programs as well as special education programs in it for our students in the Cortland area. We also own the Thompson Road campus, which is also referred to as the Henry Building, and we acquired that in 1975, and that houses our career and technical education programs in Anadaga County as well as some of our alternative education programs like Stars. Most recently, we acquired the main campus, which is off of 7th North Street where our administrative offices are. Based on the growth of our special education programs, which I could hear from Don's presentation, you're seeing an increase in the special education numbers as well, our adult education programs, which were located previously at the Crown Road campus, moved into the first floor of this main campus, which allowed special education to continue to grow at the Crown Road campus, and we also have our administrative offices here. So what do we lease? We lease our Crown Road campus. That's one of our largest leases. We also lease the space where our Central New York Regional Information Center is located, as well as our Innovation Tech Building. We have a small space that we lease at 804th Street for Alternative to Homebound Program. And then we have part of a plaza in Cortland County where we have Cortland Alternative School, which is a 9 through 12 program on one end of the building, and then our Seven Valleys New Tech Academy on the other end of the building. So Crown Road, just the nuts and bolts of it, it's a large building, 83,600 square feet, 15 and 1/2 acres, and there's three acres that are still available for development on that piece of property. So I'm just going to buzz through a few of the pictures so you can get a sense, if you haven't been there, what it looks like. Here are some of our high school classrooms for students with emotional disabilities. We have spaces that are specially designed for related services and sensory rooms for our students with disabilities. We have three activity rooms. So we don't have a full-size gymnasium, but we have three smaller activity rooms, which really works out well for our population of students. And here's a playground that we put in about five years ago, which our students absolutely love, and they do have some features for our students with special needs, so they're able to access it. Our cafeteria, and we actually have school lunch brought in here and served, but it's a very nice cafeteria. We also had a new HVAC system put in by the -- our landlord, if you will, ATRAP Corporation in 2017. So that, we know, would be a huge expense, and the fact that that's already been absorbed by the owner is great. And the building is in very good repair, and it has all of these specially-designed spaces for us. So what do we -- which programs do we currently serve at Crown Road? We actually have 2811 classrooms, kindergarten through grade 12. So I know we have a lot of educators in this room, and they know what that means. It's a very busy building, very complex kids, wonderful kids who, you know, need some space. We also have four 1214 buildings, students on the autism spectrum who may have some behavioral issues. We also have our, what was formerly known as our Alternative Education Program, but we're now referring to it as Innovative Education. Our REACH program, which is middle-school age, we've got about 40 students who attend that program, and we also have a mental health clinic, which we think is so important for our students that is located there as well. So just very quickly, what were the options we considered? First, we said we could continue leasing, and, you know, someone else, this other buyer could purchase the building, and they would have to maintain our lease agreement. Or we could, option number two, relocate at the end of our lease and enter into a new lease, try and find a different space and lease in a different location. We could build new, which is our third option, or we could think about purchasing Crown Road campus. So the first option, we were 1819 was the first of a 10-year lease, a first year of a 10-year lease, and then after 2728, we would have the opportunity to extend for two-year, two-five-year lease terms, to extend that to about a 20-year lease. So nuts and bolts, and to me, this is kind of where the rubber hits the road, especially when you're thinking about from a taxpayer's perspective or from a budgeting's perspective. If we stayed right where we were, where we are now, and continued to lease the way we've been leasing for 30 years, over the course of this current lease and exercising the next two-five-year options, so over the course of 20 years, we'd be paying just about $24 million, $23,915,000. And you recall me saying that to purchase the building, if we were to offer, if we were to match it, they're asking $12,850,000. The second option would be to relocate. Then we'd have to enter into a new agreement after the 10-year lease, because we're committed for 10 years, and then we'd have to renovate the space at $215 per square foot, and those renovation costs would get rolled into the cost of the new lease term, which would certainly be more expensive. I was shocked by this. Some of you who are in this industry would not be shocked, but I hadn't -- I said, "Well, couldn't we -- what would it cost if we went out and actually built new?" $36 million. And that doesn't even count site development or any other work of that nature. So our recommended option was to go ahead and purchase, and the assumptions we made were basically entering into a 20-year bond repayment schedule, assuming a 4% to 5% interest rate, which is conservative, and then financing through DASNE, the Domitory Authority, which means that we wouldn't be going out to our districts and asking them to borrow the money. We would work with DASNE to get that bond, those bond payments. And so we'd offer the $12,850,000. So what does that mean for us, for our region, for you as a district? Over the course of time, and this is very conservative, if you look at the far-right corner, it says $2,201,000. And that would be the savings over the course of the 20 years if we were to purchase instead of to rent. And that's very conservative, because if you look at column eight, you'll notice there's two dashes at the bottom, and that was assuming that we weren't entering into any other, didn't have a lease payment. And obviously, if we didn't own, we'd have to have a lease payment in the neighborhood of $1.4 million each of those years as well. So what does that mean for North Syracuse? So this is just an estimate, but in comparison per year, if you were to look at what it would save you as a district per year, owning versus renting, would be $9,465 per year. So the benefits, and I'm just going to kind of go through this quickly, but the building space really works wonderfully for our kids, and we do have a unique, complex population, so that matters a lot. The return on investment's outstanding. It's just like a home, right? Renting versus owning, we have financial equity and potential appreciation. And it's in great shape. They just put in a brand-new HVAC system. So we know the building. We've been living in it, so we know the quality of the building. And the campus is very centrally located, so it's right off the thruway, which is great for our districts in Anadaga County. So basically, in summary, we're maintaining a high-quality facility. We're discontinuing lease payments and getting a better return on investment with no additional cost to districts. So what are our next steps? That was our -- the decision was to go for it. So we are putting up a referendum, and qualified voters in the OCM-BOSSES region can vote. So to be eligible, you have to be a citizen of the United States, 18 years or older, and a resident in one of our component school districts for at least 30 days prior to the You don't have to officially be registered as a voter, but you actually have to be able to show proof of your residency. So our voting locations are actually going to be right at our BOSSES campuses. So our main campus, which is 110 Alwood Davis Road, our Crown Road campus, which is the building we're looking to purchase, our Thompson Road campus, where our CTE programs are, and our Cortlandville campus down in Cortland. And our vote day, and we did, we kind of checked out other districts' votes and wanted to make sure we weren't competing with your own district votes, and so our vote day will be November 19th from 10:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. And so certainly, we would encourage everyone to vote, and happy to answer any questions you might have.
I have a couple of questions, but, okay. Do we get to choose where we go vote? Is any of those places?
Yes, you can choose anywhere.
Between 10 and 8? And I do support this project from listening to Mr. Crabtree tell us. He used a term, I think, many times, what, "no-brainer"? He wasn't talking about you.
Oh, good, I'm glad.
But my concern, and this has nothing to do with the viability of what you presented here, I just wondered if you thought of, or have you been contacted? I was at a Clay Town Board meeting for this proposed bazillion-square-foot warehouse. They're going to bulldoze a golf course and potentially build, depending on where that goes, in the next few weeks. They made a comment with a traffic study of 25 tractor-trailers.
Per hour.
Per hour, coming off of Exit 38 down all Liverpool. And they have to enter this proposed warehouse off of Morgan Road. And so I just wondered, if they talked to you when they did the traffic study? How do you feel that works with your busing? Do you have concerns there?
Do you want to take that? Andrew's our Assistant Superintendent for Administration, also works with our officials and transportation directors.
I know we already have Raymore Flanagan. I don't know what the volume is there. I think Dot Foods, yeah.
We are surrounded by commercial properties, for sure. We do expect some traffic, but we're, from the site plans that we looked at, it appears that the tractor-trails will be entering on a road that not in front of our campus. My one concern would be possibly employee traffic, but I have hope that the towns can handle the traffic patterns as they change. And also for us, we're only going to be entering that traffic pattern twice a day. So early in the morning and, you know, 2:30 in the afternoon. So I'm thinking if the timing is right, hopefully, it won't impact our traffic patterns any more than a normal day would. Timing is everything, and the timing, and we had to make a decision prior to the announcement, and we made that decision, and it's a good spot for our students, and we're comfortable with the decision.
Thank you.
Hi, Colleen.
Hi, Mary.
I have a question. Can you go back to the slide which shows all the contributions for district? So maybe I should know this, but I don't. What is our WADA? What is that?
So that's ARWADA, the Resident Weighted Average Daily Attendance. When you shouldn't, I mean, that's a, everyone is confused by ARWADA aid. It's a way of calculating the ratio of aid that you get as a school district.
So our number 9279, that's supposed to be the number of students?
It's a weighted number, based on their average daily attendance.
Not an actual number. And so if we purchase the facility, we'll save money, so will our share. Does this represent all of what we contribute for BOSSES, or just this campus?
Just this, just this campus.
Okay. Would that change because we're going to be saving money?
So that, so actually, if you look at columns, I'm trying to read them, and Andrew can help me. The difference between the G and H, the projected average local effort for the project
G and H, the projected average local effort for the project, $41,199 would be the, the new price if we were to purchase the building versus the H column, which is the 18-year average local effort for rent and taxes if we were to continue to rent the building. So, in that case, you'd be paying 50, roughly $50,664 per year. So, per year, you'll be saving the I column, which is $9,465 approximately. Does that answer your question?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you for making the presentation so easy to understand.
Oh, you're welcome. Thanks for having us.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Under comments from the audience, we have one person signed up. That's John Carrillo. And you've done this before, so you know the three-minute thing-
I know. I have three minutes.
And I assume you-
Are you ready?
Okay. And there'll be an audible signal there. Okay, thank you.
So, good evening, Board members and superintendent and administrators. Our members, family and friends have gathered in a show of solidarity and support as we seek successful completion of our negotiations. I want the administrative team to recognize who we have been negotiating for. And tonight has been an exceptional Board meeting, we have lots of great information. We look forward to working together with the Board and district leadership to continue to make our district relevant, innovative, attractive to current and future employees, and top-notch educational system for all our P-12 students. So, thank you for the time that you've dedicated. We equally have been at the table, and we look forward to our future endeavors. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Board of Education Committee reports. I'll start with Mrs. Scanlon with the policy.
Yep, our Policy Committee, we met last Tuesday. We had reviewed eight policies, and seven are on tonight's agenda, and one was tabled for the next meeting.
Thank you. And Mr. Crabtree, the OCM Bosse's Board Rep report.
Oh, you want to say-
Or, and you can talk about legislative also.
Legislative Committee, we're meeting this Wednesday, 5:00 p.m. Our committee consists of students, teachers, parents, and staff, or administrators.
Okay, thank you.
All right, into the-
The OC-
Okay. Thank you for the opportunity again to talk about OCM Bosse's. I want to thank Colleen and Andrew for their presentation, and I'd ask everybody in the audience, I know you're over 21, I know you're citizens, and this is very important to our kids. North Syracuse has the most amount, the greatest amount of students that attend OCM Bosse's in all our programs, innovative, innovation and so forth, our welders, our electricians. But this school is very important to many of our students, our senior students there. So, I'd ask everyone, please vote on that day. It's very important. Some interesting facts, we learned from our interim superintendent, Chris Dodd, that it's, everybody in the audience knows the commissioner left, I think it was August, whatever, while her replacement is now leaving. There's really a lot of things happening in Albany that we don't have control of. So, there, the acting superintendent will be leaving November 15th, and I don't know where we're going. They have not hired a consultant firm to get a new commissioner, so we're really lacking leadership there. Other than that, everybody got a report today, email about Bosse's, and I'll end it there.
Okay, thank you. Superintendent Comments, Ms. Bowles.
Thank you. As I continue to make my rounds in the district, I do want to say, the football team, they didn't win on Friday, but they have made it to sectionals, so we'll be looking forward to that. I had made, I have made my rounds and had the chance to see our boys volleyball with Mr. Lucia, who does a phenomenal job. And again, swimming and diving will be tomorrow night at Lemoine. But this weekend, I had the opportunity to see some, some phenomenal things happening. And started with the playground at Allen Road. They had two days that they had earmarked for building and the support, and I happened to stop by Gillette on Saturday and was going to Allen on Sunday because they were going to be building, and they finished on Saturday at Allen Road. One of the parents owns a construction crew, had his members come there, and they knocked it out in one day, and it is exceptional. So, if you have the opportunity, you can go look behind Allen Road. And so, I did want to thank Mr. London, I know has since left, but it was an amazing project. And at Gillette, the PTG had a color run, and kids got to get sprayed with different colors, and it was a fundraiser, and along with Optimus Basketball was going on at the same time. So, I was able to see our students in the gyms with our parents and our staff. So, they were working hard, and as I went around the corner, I saw Mr. Cordone helping with the cones and picking up from the color run. And Dawn Hussein was here, and Dawn was in her building on Sunday because they had a delivery of a pumpkin. So, it's Administrative Appreciation Week, and oftentimes, we do see people in our buildings on Saturdays or Sundays, and I just wanted to recognize that. So, I do say thank you, and it was a pleasure touring this past weekend.
Thank you, Mr. Bowles. Any other Board of Education comments?
Yeah, I didn't make it earlier, but I want to say something about Mr. Witz. John Witz passed away this, this past week. He was a board member here, I believe County would tell me, 85 to 91. Tony Botar was here at present at the time. And John added a lot to this school board. He cared about staff, he cared about students, but even more importantly, he was a community member who went throughout the community and said how great North Syracuse was. This is a huge loss. I went by Hafner's Restaurant, and they had something up on their marquee about John. He was a community member, cared about school, but he cared about everybody. So, I just want to say a few words about that.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Crabtree. Under Routine Action Items, if I get a motion to approve the minutes? Motion from George, seconded by Mary. Any discussion on the minutes? None, all in favor? Opposed, the minutes are carried. If I get a motion to put B, C, and D before us? Mark, seconded by Mike Marizio, they are the consideration and classification of the placement of disabled students or special ed, preschool disabled students, and the home instruction program. Any discussion on those? None, all in favor? Are carried. Discussion action items, can I get a motion for A, the Seeker Resolution for the purchase of the land adjacent to CNS? Motion from George, seconded by Mary. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed, it's carried. If I get a motion to take items B and C together? Nope. B's a roll call. Yes, it is. Can I get a motion for B, please? Motion, Mary? Any discussion on that? I'm sorry, before the roll call? Okay, go ahead. Hi. Hi.
Hi.
George Harrington.
Hi.
Hi.
Carried, thank you. Motion for C, please. Put that on the table. By Mike, seconded by Mark. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Carried. If I could take D and E together for the creation of FTEs for ENL and for Teacher on Special Assignment? Motion by Mary, seconded by George. Any discussion? Or did you talk to me about? Yes.
I just, like, Dan, how many, total number of teachers ENL in this school district?
That would make nine.
When I left this school board, I believe it was two. So, in just a few years, this is the number of students coming into our program.
We've had a significant influx as well as changes in state guidelines to servicing the minutes for students, especially brand-new ENL students. So, we've steadily grown almost a new ENL teacher every year for several years.
Question? All in favor? Carried, thank you. If we could take items F and G together, F is the acknowledgement of gift, which are the little seat sacks, if you saw that picture, they're kind of neat, and the scoreboard sponsorship contract. Can I get a motion for those? To Mary, seconded by Matt. Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Carried. We had a report on the policies from Mary, so if I could get a motion, I would take H, I, J, K, L, M, and N together, have them put in front of us. Motion by Mark, seconded by Mary. Any discussion on those policies? Favor? Opposed? Carried. Under Personnel Reports, the Instruction Report A, if I get a motion, please. Take these each separately. Motion by George, seconded by Mike. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed? A is carried. B, Support Staff Personnel Report, motion, please. Mike? Any discussion? None? All in favor? Opposed? And the Administrative Personnel Report is one item on- Seconded by Mike Marizio. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Take a motion for Executive Session. The motion is to move into Executive Session for the purpose of receiving an update on negotiations with the North Syracuse Education Association and to review the employment history of four individuals with no action to follow. If I could get a second? By Mr. Marizio. Any discussion on that? All in favor going to Executive Session? Opposed? Carried? Motion to adjourn, please. Motion by Mark, seconded by Mary. Any discussion? All in favor? Meeting adjourned. E8. Jason? Jason?